represents my Bangladeshi community that resides in Rochester and Kinston Hill. It's an honor to co-sponsor tonight's Bangladesh Independence Day celebration alongside my colleagues in the council, particularly Speaker Adrian Adams, councilmembers Haneeb Krishnan, Damaro Lee Williams, and those who have joined, which are council members, Nurse and Williams presently. New York City is home to one of the largest and most vibrant Bangladeshi communities in the United States, a community whose contributions continue to enrich our neighborhoods, economy, culture, and city as a whole. In my district, the Bangladeshi community is thriving with resilience and growing stronger every day. Today, as we celebrate Bangladesh's independence, we honor the courage and sacrifices of the freedom fighters who fought bravely to protect the rights of their language, culture, and sovereignty. The spirit of liberation work reminds us of the importance of language justice and the enduring strength of cultural identity. This celebration is not only a recognition of history, it's a powerful reminder that the values of freedom, diversity, and inclusion must continually be defined. I'm proud to stand with our Bangladeshi neighbors in celebrating the remarkable accomplishments, and I look forward to continuing our shared fight to empower and uplift this extraordinary community. Thank you all for joining us and the celebration tonight together. I'd like to now call up Baha from my district in the Bronx to perform the national anthem. [Applause] [Music] 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 [Applause] [Music]
I'm here to join you all tonight in celebrating Bangladesh's Independence Day right here at City Hall. This day holds deep significance, not only for our Bangladeshi friends and neighbors, but for all of us who believe in the values of freedom, resilience, and cultural pride. As the council member representing one of the most diverse districts in Queens, I am proud to serve a large and vibrant South Asian community, mostly Bangladeshi. And I understand the challenges that many Bangladeshi immigrants have faced in their journey to deliver the fortune for their families. From navigating financial independence to preserving language and culture, our Bangladeshi neighbors have continuously demonstrated strength, perseverance, and a deep commitment to community. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing an organization that embodies these values: The Bangladeshi Academy of Fine Arts, or BAFFA. BAFFA's journey began in 2006 with a group of Bangladeshi immigrant women who came together to support one another financially. What started as a small living circle led by BAFFA's co-founder, Arida Kesmin, has since grown into a cultural institution that empowers, educates, and uplifts the Bangladeshi diaspora into the arts. From teaching traditional South Asian dance and knowledge literacy to hosting live sale community events, BAFFA has become a pillar of cultural preservation and empowerment. Their mission is not just about the arts, it's about creating a space where heritage is honored, talented culture, and the next generation of Bangladeshi Americans can take pride in their roots. We are incredibly fortunate to have BAFFA here tonight, and I know they are all looking forward to a wonderful performance. So please join me in welcoming the talented artists of Bangladeshi Academy of Fine Arts.
Thank you, respected council members and guests. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to gather here to celebrate Independence Day of People's Republic of Bangladesh. On behalf of Bangladeshi community and on behalf of Bangladeshi Fine Arts Academy, BAFFA, I thank you all. I will recite a poetry as written by, we call him Poet of Yor, Rudra Mahatru Pillan. The name of the poetry is "Concentration Camp." The name determines how it's going to be portrayed. To better understand our English and non-English audiences, I will do the paragraph in Bengali and in English. His eyes were blindfolded, the first kick of the boot made his face muddy. His lips were covered with salata and ghat. When he moved his tongue, two broken teeth fell to the concrete. "Ma!" "Ma!" he screamed. Ate shukh ocha numaka, aap khwaet de cigarette, to tumse porshu kota ek boog. Porah maam shere, utkar gandho, choriya pullo khre bata she. Chalum to cigarette spashu, kar dekhe tosh tosh, aamrein moto, pushta pulte aapdo. Nitiwal naathite, dhonuker moto, pahka phre kanushe. He bha she, chitkar pote pallu ra. A house-bolt cigarette touched his chest. That after his smell of burning flesh sprayed through the air in the room. A touch of that burning cigarette formed blisters all over his body like lightning rays. A second kick went his body like a bow, and this time, he couldn't even scream. Take chit korahalo. Bete luma ruchelo, dujura boot, kalo kor kosh. Kalo, she tar paaki stoher, pashter bata bulay chilo. Bulay chilo, olahar, ar ku dar bata. She tar dele, mostro kinatar bata bulay chilo. Uthima she karon e, phar phar horre, tene phere, tene chide, nala mudo kar shart. Pant korahalo, she akhun, bhi mostro, bhi hotsho. They placed him down in flat position now. Two pairs of boots, black and red, pressed his chest. Because he talked about starvation, about hunger, he talked of the bitternessness. That's why, that's why, his shirt was pulled and pulled off. His pants were unbuttoned. Now, he was naked and hideous. Thar duh haad, pushte bhatto, je haad bije, porakar moto, je shakro thare. Je haate, she pashtar she kache, milge, je lehle, lohar, haaturi diye, shee haad, bha na kalo. Thar dushtram ho, je amul chhrechhe, shee maar po, dhayar shari, priyotamari chido. His two hands, that clenched face, that filled flags in possession of anger. Pasted posters, distributed leaflets, was broken with an angry hammer. That living hand, that hand of living person, those tin fingers, the soft fingers that touched his mom's faces, shoulder of his brother, the bone on the chin of the forehead of the beloved. But, hara diye, shee amul, pecha kalo. Shee chion tu amul, man shee chion tu bhamar. Lohar shara she diye, er kek ti horre, upre diya kalo, kar nittush, nokh kalo. Itchamud kar, laa, rote, ro. Those fingers were crushed with a stone. Those living fingers, a living likeness of a human being, with an iron beak. His innocent nails were pulled out, one by one. What a beautiful colored blood, fresh-lit blood. All over his body like petals of Prishutira. His bruised broken hand resting on the land of his country, and bloody lava is pouring from the hand. He is now dead. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that inspirational performance. I'll get a little bit from the other side. And I get the true honor and privilege to introduce tonight's distinguished honorary Southern District, Bhayatun Merian, whose remarkable work continues to uplift and empower communities across our city. Born in Bangladesh and raised right here in a working-class neighborhood in the Bronx, she is a dedicated community organizer, communication strategist, and advocate with more than two decades of experience fighting for immigrant rights, climate justice, gender equality, and poverty alleviation. Throughout her career, she has collaborated with influential organizations such as the New York City Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, Market Forces, the Urban Justice Center Street Member Project, the Friendship and Baxter Foundation, and the Commonwealth Foundation. In each of these roles, she has led impactful campaigns, mobilized communities, and amplified voices too often overlooked. When the COVID-19 pandemic struck, Bhayatun founded the Bronx Mutual Aid Network, raising over $150,000 to provide essential groceries, medicine, and financial support to undocumented and low-income families across the Bronx. And I just want to say, this is not my talking points. I was a local organizer during that time, and we were focusing on two separate parts of the Bronx, but in collaboration with all the mutual aid networks throughout the city. We really merged on figuring out how to find medicine to folks, fresh food, produce, meat, milk, in an interconnected network that local organizers figured out how to do amongst themselves, amongst the five boroughs where the local city, state, and federal governments just did not have the quick ability to do for our community members. We all stepped up, and she was one of the few in the Bronx that was willing to do that. Her advocacy has also included co-founding Bangladeshi Americans for Global Progress and the Bangladeshi Feminist Collective, organizing South Asian and Muslim communities toward greater civic engagement and feminist advocacy. Her extraordinary contributions have been recognized by AJ Plus, which is up there, Harper's Bazaar, and Vice, and she has been honored with awards including the Grio Award from the Bronx Council of Arts. As we're celebrating Bangladesh's Independence Day today, I and all of us here get to proudly recognize Bhayatun Merian for her tireless commitment and dedication to justice, equality, and community empowerment. Congratulations, and please come up for your honor.
Wow, so welcome, Shwabai. Hello, everybody. What an honor to be here. Honestly, I personally want to start off with thanking council member of Arts for this honor. It really feels like it's a circle around moment for all of us that, you know, have been in the borough, doing work, and finally are coming together and we're very proud for it. I actually wanted to start off my speech with a quote from Rominda Rattabur, you know, who we Bangladeshi's love. He was a polyman, and he really lifted the spirit of the Bengali people. So one of the first quotes that I want to start off with is this quote that really is the mantra of my life. "I slept and dreamt that life was joy; I awoke and saw that life was service; I acted and behold, service was joy." So for me, this quote really resonates really deeply because service work is something that comes in drastically to me. It is something that I am proud of because my father was a political activist in Bangladesh in the 80s and 90s. I come from this lineage of really taking care of people, of really making sure that we're expanding the rights and human rights for everybody in the city. I want to speak really briefly about my community, the Bangladesh community. It's a community that we're everywhere, you see us everywhere. We're at the Melton Donuts, we're at the subways, we're all working it out again. All across the city, you're seeing us every day, but sometimes we're invisibleized because we're not wearing it on our faces. But there's many of us amongst them, my idols in this room, and I want to thank them today for all the work that they've done before I even came into the picture. I'm looking at Kaziyaba from Drav, who is my idol, very close friend. And you know, one of the fellow members of Bangladesh Feminist Collective with me, we go, our relationship goes way back, and I really thank you. I think thanks for it, Apar from BAFFA, Bangladesh Academy of Fine Arts. Kaziyaba was instrumental in helping me organize Mutual Aid in the Bronx. As soon as COVID-19 hit, and I told her, "We need to get food to people, we need to get medicine to people." You know what she said? She said, "I have a dance academy, use my space." She completely gave her space for me to use to do all this mutual aid. Thank you so much, everyone. And I also want to thank Apar.
Hi everyone, back again. I'm here to bring up our next performance for our last honorary. And then we're going to bring up Bangladesh Institute of Performing Arts. Vipa strives to promote the Bengali arts and language. Give it a round of applause. Just a little bit about the organization. Vipa strives to promote Bengali arts, language, and New York City's promoting multicultural communities. They offer accessible classes and have platforms for emerging artists and performers, while increasing exposure to the rich Bengali arts and arts in New York City. They're providing access to the arts through the young children growing in New York City around our communities, not only for its exposure, but also to work and develop in the schools to make contributions for the young people to be successful as young adults that are making contributions in our society. The last thing I'd like to say is Vipa is a prominent leader in working to promote yes, language and education for our communities, but also through its longevity in performing arts. Since 1993, it's been able to perceive so many cultural benefits. It works since we have done this evening for this final performance. So, thank you so much. It will be amazing. Shanti Nishu Shuritsho, Happy Independence Day. I would like to pay respects to the freedom fighters and martyrs of our revolution. The poem that I'm going to recite is titled "Manush", meaning "human", written by Nishneshwam Gopinath Gati Nazul Islam. It speaks to the human tendency to distort religion and belief that should inspire us to support and uplift one another rather than to divide and diminish. Manush. Gaheeshan meedan. Manushyete boru kichu nai, nohi kichu huiya. Nai desh kaal bakhre bhe, obhede dharm pujani. Shobhi deshre shobkaale ghoreh hori tini manushyere karani. Pujani duar ghoro. Khura rehta kure dhamae dhware pujan shoni ghoro. Shobore dekhiya kure pujani khuriro bhoto naloi. Dehodha re boriya chere rajataja huye jabi ishto. Jirno gatru, shirno gatru khudhai on thokhi. Dakhiro mantho, dhankhoro baba khaini go shakti. Shomsham ontho bol mandi, ghukari phiriya chale. Tirmiri raktri pathi jureta khudar mani kijale. Ghukari ghukari hoy, oi mandi pujani. Haile gotha tomar nai. Moschide kaal shibini achiro, othele goshto utti. Bhaasi re kiyache, molla kahay, hesetai puti puti. Hemun shoboi edo go safhi, gahe acha diyachi. Bolay, baba, ami phukka phakka achi, achi meeshan din. Tegeyahu iya haquino bolla, tha na kono dekhi lekta? Bhoga acho, moro kohagare ki, na acho re ishva ta. Ghukari go kilo, na baba. Molla haquino, tha hori sha na, sota bobtek. Goshto utti ke, bushide diro tha. Ghukari phiriya chale, chhite chhite bolay. Ashita vachhore kete ralo, ami dakhi ni tomari rohbhu. Amarik khudar onno tha kule, mantho karoni rohbhu. Tab moschid mandire, rohbhu nai manushyere sabi. Molla purut lagai cheta, shakul duare chabhi. Kotha chenge shikajni mahode, kotha re kala pahar? Bhele phaaro i bhaja naloi, jato tha deada. Khudar ghore te kapaar lagai, kete shikhan ta da? Shob darre khola robe, chala, haturi shabor chala. Haile bhaja naloi, tomari miare choriya bhando, gahe shakke joi. Duhulai.
Good evening everybody, and Subhash Bantha. Today, we will be performing the song by our national poet, Gazi Nazul Islam. The translation for the song is, "God give us courage, God give us patience, and make our world beautiful and make peace."
Sorry. Hi everyone, I'd like to call up a round of applause from my district to give a few words.
Good evening everyone. Thank you to the New York City Council for the Saturday, Bangladesh Independence Day. I pay tribute to all the freedom fighters who sacrificed their lives and for independence. They still remain by the New York City Council is a great honor for all Bangladeshi American in the city. Thank you so much, thank you.
Hi everyone, Ramada Mubarak, early Ed Mubarak, and Shubhashan Iwaz. Today was one of those days where I started in Manhattan, had to go back to Brooklyn, had to come back to Manhattan. And I was no maybe you know that experience too well. I fell for Chani, I was a protester representing with Council of thirty-nine, who homes in Brooklyn, in Los Angeles, and knew the first Bangladeshi member elected to the city council. Today, we go together to honor the fifty-fourth anniversary of Bangladesh's independence and data stands as a testament to the resilience and courage of Bangladeshi people. It's in the journey of our people, both on homeland and across the diaspora, that we find the echoes of struggle, sacrifice, and triumph. The fight for the preservation of the Bangla language during the language movement of nineteen fifty-two laid the foundation for a greater fight, the liberation war of nineteen seventy-one, that ultimately secured our nation's independence. This journey was not just one conflict, but also a cultural resistance. These artistic, through this journey, through songs, literary expressions continue to inspire us today, reminding us how the power of language and identity is a link of action. And here in Brooklyn, most of the evidence of educators, like professors Branner D. and Manhar at Union Brooklyn College, the first time I was ever taught by South Asian educators in my education career in New York City, along with the collective efforts of my Bangladeshi feminist sisters, I gained a deeper understanding of Bangladesh's devastates and revolution. And I'm so proud that so many now in the Department of Education, we have recruited Bangla-speaking teachers and Bangladeshi students, get to witness someone who they can aspire to be, that some of their community is their teacher. Our presence here in New York symbolizes our strength and resilience as the fastest growing Asian community in the city, representing a visible and integral part of the city's diversity. Bangladeshi's are not only contributing to the economic, social, and cultural level, but also ensuring that our voices are heard in the political sphere. Today, we remember thousands of students, civilians, and leaders who lost their lives for our freedom. I stand proud of our community and the brave freedom fighters who laid the foundation for our people to thrive in New York City, and many of those champions sit among us here this evening. I am also proud now to present the next proclamation of the night in recognition of remarkable, remarkable leaders who continue to champion the spirit of justice and activism and compassion for our South Asian communities in Brooklyn. The Brooklyn chapter leaders of Drum NYC, bases rising up in Brooklyn. Our hardworking group dedicated to fighting for the intersectional issues in our community. Everything from immigrant rights, climate justice, workers' rights, and the empowerment of those experiencing domestic violence. And this chapter worked very closely with local organizations and my office to ensure that our communities have access to resources and information. Their leadership in cloth includes Kalida Akbar Rumi, a powerful organizer and base builder, Rumi played a critical role. A powerful organizer and base builder, Rumi played a critical role in the Green Light Bill campaign and the Excluded Workers Fund campaign, strengthening the Drum Kensington base. Next, I'd like to invite Saima Khan. A committed advocate for racial and immigration justice, Saima has been instrumental in building leadership within the Orient Rights Movement. Tumara Akbar. A key figure in organizing delivery workers, Tumara has worked tirelessly to expand Drum's reach in Kensington and has played a crucial role in its C4 initiatives. Saida Arvind Akbar. She's a longtime drum board member and climate justice advocate. Saida has been a leading voice in environmental activism. Delavara Ahmed. As a heated leader, Delavara provides support for survivors of domestic violence, while also campaigns of climate justice efforts. Walima Sarer. A sharp political thinker, Walima has developed leadership skills, has helped develop leadership skills of members and has been pivotal in Drum's C4 work. Isn't this fascinating? We're not done yet. So many leaders in our community ensuring that we're safe, protected. Musafin Irene Khattouk. A steadfast leader in campaign organizing and base building, Irene is deeply committed to the movement advancement of the Orient Rights. Ashrafu Hassan, the president. A strong advocate for construction over justice, Ashrafu survived workplace injury in twenty-twenty, which is when I met him, and has since become a local leader against unsafe labor conditions and a passionate climate justice activist. Hassan Luba Akbar. A respected elder in Kensington for over twenty years, Hassan has fostered strong community relationships and played a key role in base building efforts. Nazmul Saini. He's also fearless leader for delivery workers in our community. Nazmul was instrumental in the fight for the minimum wage bill and continues to advocate for delivery workers' rights and safety. Fasimah Shabi. An exceptional leader in community relations, Fasimah's a dedicated force of Drum's C4 initiatives and grassroots organizing. And last but not least, Shampa, Shampa Das. And last but not least, Shampa, Shampa Das. She's held tonight to a passion advocate for climate justice. Shampa has committed herself to environmental activism and sustainability efforts. Each of these leaders brings a unique and invaluable contribution to our community, demonstrating courage, resilience, and unwavering dedication to justice. They stand as pillars of support and advocacy, ensuring that our Bangladeshi's and South Asian communities in Brooklyn are at the table, receive the resources, rights, and recognition that they deserve. There, thank you all for your tireless work. Can we give a big round of applause? These folks are rarely thanked and I appreciate that during our Heritage Day events, we get to honor the folks who are behind the scenes or are working so diligently and no one is seeing or understanding the value of their labor. And I want to also just acknowledge that the Kensington community where I was born and raised is much stronger because of Drum, because of the women who have decided that they are going to be engaged, they will be vocal about issues that are not just about immigrants, that are not just about themselves, but also participate in civic engagement and really make the city what it should be. So, I appreciate you all. Please, you're all on the podium, we're gonna now hand out your... I'd like to invite Gazi Fozia to receive this on behalf of the organization or our Brooklyn's leader partners.
That's great, thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, everyone gets one big step back. Okay, now everyone, I mean just squeeze like an accordion. We're always gonna inhale. Okay, everyone, here we go. One, two, and smile. Perfect. Thank you so much. A few more, so just stay right there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Salam everyone, and good evening. My name is Gazi Fozia, I'm the director of organizing Drum, bases rising up in Brooklyn. I live in Jamaica, Natasha's district, but I organize in Shanawatra district. So, isn't that amazing? The crossroad we make relations. So, when Shanawatra's office offered to give the proclamation to Drum Brooklyn base, I say, "You have to give the proclamation by leader, who actually dedicate their time, cook food, take care of their children, take care of family, take care of that, and come to the community and work for the community." This is the people actually hero in Navan district. Every single day, they are in the street. If you go, you can see our gang. If you want to see our gang, then you have to come at this day on Sunday. You can see, they are in the grocery store, they are in the restaurant, they are in the street, they are in the plaza, everywhere. Chain people for their new rights, go to shop to shop, do the workplace new rights. Every single time election came, they go to road and ask people to vote right person. You mean, I say, vote to right person? This is the time again, we have to vote right person. We have to defeat all racist, racist, and hated. We have to make it happen again. Who is our people? Vote them. So, that's the reason, this is the people my power. If you say, "Oh, Kaz is a powerful organizer, blah blah blah", I will take it, because I know who make it happen every single day with me. This is the people with me. You've never seen that one friend. Today is the time, you can see that one friend. Thanking Shanawatra and City Council to recognize my people and my country's independence. Thank you so much on behalf of Drum.
I'd like to invite all of our honoraries to come to the podium. And my colleagues.
You'll sing?
I'm good, thank you. Yeah, I've just said I'm no.
Okay, we're gonna take one more big step back for a lot of people. All right, thank you so much. Okay, everyone. Here we go. Oh, I'm so sorry. One more time. Okay, everyone.
Happy Independence Day!
Just stay there for a while, there's a lot of people who want this photo, okay? I'm so thankful.
Why don't you give it to the camera? Pink camera.
Where's that pink camera? Oh, there you go.
There it is, this is the one.
There it is, this is the one.
If everyone could just take a seat and close us out. And then for anybody who wants to stick around, please do, we're cutting close to give their time.
Diligence. For the safety of everyone.
Thank you all so much for inviting us this evening, a day that many of you were fasting, to recognize the heroes of our city. The heroes that we don't see on TV like us, elected officials, and also lead our policy and lead our priorities around the budget. I would up the funding that Basir said to vote. This is an important reminder that while the word of elections has been hard in terms of language accessibility and ensuring that there's interpretation and translated materials that our communities understand, organizations like Drum have stepped up, the Bangladesh Society have stepped up. It is important that our city recognize that so much of the work that is happening is partnered with immigrants and refugees. I look forward to many, many more years of celebrating Bangladesh Independence Day at a time when diversity, equity, and inclusion programs are being ripped apart, at a time when billions of dollars are likely to be removed from our education system. This moment presents another opportunity for us to organize, for us to be with one another on the issues that matter most to working people. And that's because our DNA as Bangladeshis have that rigor and that compassion and that passion to be able to mobilize people for a fair and just city. Thank you all so much for coming. I want to just give a shout out to all of our honorees. Mohamed Ali from the Bangladesh American Society. Alhamdulillah, Suman Dalor. Dhanun Murian. And the Drum Brooklyn Chapter. And a big, big thank you to our performances, Bangladesh Institute of Performing Arts. And the Bangladesh Academy of Fine Arts. Thank you all again. I will be behind the chairs for them to talk to me, but I also have a run in a couple of minutes. So thank you all so much for joining, it's really an honor to be with you all. So we have food, not massive meals, but food to go that you can pick up on your way out. There's also a prayer room that does the thing for anybody who wants to say prayer here. So those accommodations are available. You can exit from these doors and go downstairs. There are officers that will help, helping sure that you can find where you need to.
Well, I'm councilmember Shahanah Hidhien. Such an exciting evening, actually, we all are celebrating Bangladesh's Independence Day. It is an honor to be a Bangladeshi council and fight for our people, fight for workers' rights, immigrant rights, women's protection, ensure that our small businesses have what they need to survive. It's an honor that people are also doing incredible work to keep our people safe. So it's an honor to be a councilmember and it's an honor to have colleagues across the country who care about Bangladesh. Listen to the Bangladesh community and don't abandon it.
Oh, sorry, you can take, go ahead, you take that. Okay, great.
Okay. Oh, for me?
Yeah, for you.
Okay, where, right there?
Or along them, what you want? I'll take a picture, taking picture. Here? Here, so you can have a background of them. They're moving now. Okay, that's too many shots. Give mine.
Sorry if I kept getting in your way.
It's just okay. No, you're live on YouTube, you can, want to see my channel? Thank you! Thank you, congratulations! Congratulations! Okay, sorry, everyone, I wasn't able to talk because we need to listen and we cannot talk at the same time with them. The honorees and the presenters and the community leaders of the Bangladesh community here in New York, as far as Bronx, Queens, Brooklyn, and everywhere here in the city of five boroughs. I hope you enjoyed the presentation for today. They're gonna have the parade this Saturday, so the parade will be more exciting. We're going to have the parade this Saturday as part of the celebration. So March 26th today, this is the official day for the Independence Day. And it's celebrated initially here at the City Hall, New York City Hall Council. Again, everyone, thank you for coming. Thank you, mom.
Thank you.
We have a nice lady here. Thank you very much.
Where are you from?
Manila.
No, no, but where you live?
Queens. I always see you here. Always. Oh, that's why. That's why. So I can expose you here. You're one of the world, one of the world members of Amanda is here.
Yes.
Yes.
And I volunteer for Moya.
Yeah, that's right.
You know what Moya means?
What is that?
Mayor's Office of Immigration Affairs.
Moya, Mayor's Office of Immigration Affairs. Oh, that's where your volunteer worker there. So here we have one of the volunteer workers for Amanda.
Moya.
Moya.
Yes.
Yes, and Moya.
World member of Amanda.
The world member of Amanda. Thank you very much for coming, mom.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for nice meeting you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
My name is Yurala. Yurala.
Yurala.
Yes.
I'm Gil.
Gil, okay.
If you want to see this in YouTube, if you can, and you can cut, cut the clips and then save it as your video. You have my, my, uh, qualification, my permission.
You have my information.
Yeah. No, you get my information.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go to YouTube. Okay, it's G I L. G I L, face. TV, in television. No, single L. Uh, what you do is, you have to search, first a search, that's better.
Do you have TV?
Yeah, that one. That one. Yeah, that one. So you start it up, make a clip, and then make it your own.
Okay.
You can, you can post it anywhere, post anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So she's going ahead now, and thank you very much, honey.
Thank you very much, my dear.
Is that a picture together? You want it this way or you want it this way? I'll take one. Okay, now, this one.
It's picture-taking time and everybody's busy taking pictures before going. So as I was saying again, again, everyone, thank you for coming and I see you again tomorrow. Tomorrow is a Thursday. Oh, tomorrow, I see, I tell you what is the agenda tomorrow. Tomorrow, I'm gonna go back to Rosebud Island to highlight the Sakura. What is Sakura in English? Um, cherry blossoms, yeah, to highlight the cherry blossoms. And it could, because it's blooming right now. So before it leaves us, because you know Sakura only, it lasts for seven days only, so we need to go tomorrow, okay? So from, uh, from the cable car to the Rosebud Island, then Rosebud Island, we go around for the Sakura or the cherry blossom trees viewing, and then we take the ferry, the ferry, I mean ferry boat, going to Wall Street. And then Wall Street, we take another ferry going to Governor's Island. So that's our agenda tomorrow, it's gonna be a long day tomorrow, okay? Thanks, everyone, Emzombrano. Emzombrano says the Bushwick, the collective is real good. Oh, the collective, Bushwick. But Bushwick, where's Bushwick in, in, uh, in, in, what it called that? Brooklyn, right? Oh, Christian is asking if I can show Art New York. Okay, yesterday I showcased the wall arts, the murals around Lower East Manhattan. And there are a lot around the city. So next time, I'm gonna choose another location for, uh, to highlight a group of murals or wall arts. We're gonna do that next time. So thank you for your suggestion, Christian. So don't stop making suggestions, so we, give us idea what to, what and where to go next time. Because sometimes you're running out of ideas, you know? Good that you're giving us some, some ideas to go to, okay? Israel Morales, hola amigo, adios, paalam. Yes, Brooklyn, that's, Emzombrano, that's from Brooklyn, yes, I remember. Thank you, Christian, thank you, Emzombrano. I know, muchas gracias, Israel. Hola and goodbye, Israel. Bye bye. And for the rest of the gang there, I don't see them talking now. Oh, that's, uh, Sweet, Byronet, and Andres, misery. Thank you very much, bye bye, see you tomorrow. Tomorrow is cherry blossom viewing, okay? Bye for now, see you again tomorrow. Bye bye.